Do we want to schedule another one defensively or what does the board think?
It seems like we should.
How is December 7th, David Robbins?
Looks clear. Let me just go check the calendar and otherwise I'll say yes and then find out we don't have a place to do this.
Okay.
So December 7th.
December 7th. The day that lived in incamy.
Yeah, is it?
Yeah.
The 6th? Isn't that the 6th? I don't know.
7th. That's what my calendar says.
Well, then it must be true.
No, this is a lying calendar.
Yeah, I should remember. What was I doing on that day?
I don't think I ever born.
My father was. What year was that? Forty five, forty, no, forty one, that's right, of course, forty one. All right. No, it wasn't forty four. Yeah, obviously forty one.
December 7th is open.
All right, and then the next question, and this is to David Robbins. There's a final due date quote unquote for us getting this in on time and also having it scheduled so that we can have a second meeting. Do you have, do you know when that?
I'll have to look that up. It's, the local government center has a calendar that I'll have to go look at.
Okay, so just let us know.
Yeah.
So hold on, are we having a, what are we doing on the 7th?
Continuing. I mean, I assume we'll still be working on this.
I see, okay.
Yeah, we can always cancel if we don't need it, probably.
Yeah, if we don't need it, we'll cancel.
Okay, but we're definitely meeting on the 14th as well then?
Yeah, that's our scheduled meeting, so if we don't need it, we can get rid of the 7th if that's agreeable there.
Right, because we can't have a hearing on the 14th if we're meeting on the 7th on this, so.
Right, right. It would have to be in January.
Right.
Okay, so everybody got the working draft?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's run through, I have one correction I want to make because I wrote for the medium solar, I wrote one acre and 20,000. In my notes, it was one acre, not 20,000.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, so as we go through A, small solar, we, how are we going to measure the small solar? You know, we're not, we moved away from the, we moved to, you know, pure acreage.
Right.
Small solar has, you know, people can put things on different parts of their property. How are we going to measure them?
John, can we go back?
Yeah, excuse me, John, can I, I don't think I received a copy of the draft. It was emailed.
Okay, could you send it again, please?
Was there another copy?
So John, I wonder if we could start with the first thing, a solar energy system.
Sure.
It seems like we could save some words if we said a solar energy system, a CES dash, a structure composed of one or more sets of panels that relies upon sunshine as a, you know, energy source. So then we don't have to repeat that because actually we should be repeating it for small, medium, or large, so.
Okay, can you give that wording to David?
I will, yep.
Okay, is everybody okay with that wording?
Could you repeat it again?
Okay, so after structure composed of one or more sets of panels. Because you get into that in A and then you don't repeat it in B and C, so I just think we can throw it up because it's, in every case, we're going to, it could be composed of one or more sets of panels, no matter what kind of or size system it is. So a structure composed of one or more sets of panels that relies upon sunshine is an energy source capable of collecting, distributing, and/or storing energy.
Fine with me.
Okay. And just before, and then I also thought that we could, in terms of like the most general definitions, then D and E and F and G are all types of solar energy systems.
David, I'm sorry, could you bring that up for me also?
That I think.
I have it online device.
Could be put up in like the introductory thing which says a solar energy system may be, one, roof mounted, or A, roof mounted, B, solar tracking, or C, fixed, or G, or D.
Nikki, where are you putting this?
Well, so it seems to me that D, E, F, and G are just types of solar energy systems. And so therefore could go right underneath that first sentence which says it's a structure composed of one or more sets of panels. Because A, B, and C all just talk about sizes, right?
Okay.
So we might say after that first sentence, a solar energy system may be, colon, you know, and then we would put D, E, F, or G up there and, you know, it could be one, two, or three, or you change it to A, B, C, or D, right? So, because that's what a solar energy system kind of is, is one of those things in our world. And then we can get into something separate with the sizing.
Although he does later separate out group net metered system as one that requires a review regardless of size.
Well, we can, we can say that no matter what, you know, that's easy to say, all these things require conditional use permit. Doesn't mean, you know, we're just talking about what the definition is here. We're not trying to regulate. The definition should not have regulatory language and it just says what it is.
Well, it's just that you're talking about sort of the geometry or the placement installation in the first three, but the third actually is really more of a system of billing and distribution. So in other words, it's like apples and oranges to include that.
Okay, then put the three up there and group net metered could be on its own. And group net metered could be any of these, could be roof and re-tracking, or could be fixed, and, right?
That's why I think it's better to leave it as a separate thing if we want to make that a separate criteria for a review, then maybe just keep it on its own. I'm also not sure that it's defined right here.
I don't think it is either, but that's a different thing, so.
Can I get back to your thing? I think I'm okay with the D, E, F thing, but getting back to where you're at, it's composed of one or more sets of panels.
Yep.
Remember also that the last part of that definition is storing energy, so it's more than just panels. It could be in the future, you know, a series of batteries or storage devices, so.
Yeah.
I'm okay to leave out the thing where it says one or more sets of panels.
Okay, well, then I'd like to leave it out too, you know, and just say, you know, it's everything, which is, it says in the first sentence then.
Right.
Because, you know, it seemed to me that if you're going to say it in A, you needed to say it in B and C and also in G. So, because those were different types of systems, so I would just say, yeah, let's get rid of that.
So I'm going to say maybe what we should do is say that the solar energy system, while it says it's a structure, but maybe we want to move the one or many panels into the very first sentence there because, yes, you're right. Any of these may have one or many panels. I wouldn't want it to founder on the fact that, oh, well, but I have three panels here, but it, three panels for a medium array and, but it doesn't say, it says small can be one or many panels.
Well, maybe what we should do is say it's a structure that is composed of many components because it could be a box, it could be a panel, it could be a wire.
And it could also be a little hut that houses your batteries or.
So a structure composed of multiple components that relies upon sunshine as an energy source and is capable of collecting, distributing, and storing.
Do you want to just say and associated equipment?
There's a lot of ways you could say it.
Just.
Yeah, associated equipment.
You know, you haven't said anything about the inverters. There's so much, there's so much that, you know, could be part of this and say, well, this is not part of your definition, so you can't do it.
But we, but we are saying that it's collection, distribute, distribution. And storing energy. I'm not sure what distribution, I guess, I guess.
Well, distribution would be anything, you know, the lines running back to your pole after your inverters.
So can I just ask this question? We're saying a structure, well, I mean, we're calling it solar energy system, so it's a system.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not one thing or another. This is a system of components, you know, a system is a bunch of components.
Okay.
We could say a structure or structures that rely upon sunshine is an energy, you know, just keep it simple. Otherwise, we're going to start tripping over ourselves with all the different things that can go in there.
Right, but can't we say all components? I mean, wouldn't that be?
One or more components that, instead of a structure.
Components that are used for, yeah.
A system composed of multiple components.
Right.
Let's just use that for now because that, and then take it out of the one or more panels in A. Okay, now I'm back to the, how do you measure it?
Okay, but before you get to that, does somebody have, what we just settled on because I don't, does somebody have that wording?
Yeah, I'm working on it, okay, yep.
Okay, so Vicki, Vicki will be responsible for that wording?
Yep.
Okay.
Getting to the measurement, I think that going with square feet for the small and medium is okay. In fact, what I've suggested in A is that a solar system energy that's ground mounted and comprised of solar panels whose total surface area is 2,000 square feet or less. And then I've done something else in.
So you mean panel surface area?
Panel surface area.
Are we getting away from that? Or the space that it occupies?
It's just, it's whatever the panel, the square footage of the panel. We're not worried about the footprint or the drip edge or anything like that, it's just.
Well, but actually, in last year's definition, we did, because there's so many different things that could happen, we said if the base of a structure is larger than the, what is the parts in terms of panel size, then the bigger footprint area will be counted. That's from the original one.
Actually, John, I found, I think, a pretty good definition of solar land coverage.
Okay.
Let me just read that. Solar land coverage is defined exclusively for the purpose of calculating the footprint of the land area occupied by the components of a solar array. The solar land coverage is the land area that encompasses all components of the solar collection system, including but not limited to fencing, buffering, mounting equipment, panels, and ancillary components of the system. This definition does not include access roads and is not to be interpreted as measurement of impervious surface as it may be defined in the ordinance.
That sounds very good.
That seems like it, I think that was from San Morton, the town of San Morton. Go ahead and just drop that right into the definitions section. Yeah, I mean, I think that really explains it, what the size of it is, you know.
I think it's very good.
Okay, Tim, would you read that again, just?
Okay, solar land coverage is defined exclusively.
Solar land coverage, yep.
Is defined exclusively for the purpose of calculating the footprint of the land area occupied by the components of a solar array. The solar land coverage is the land area that encompasses.
Why don't you just give it to Vicki?
Yeah, well, she's reading it, yeah.
Yeah, okay, can we say components of a solar energy system just to keep it with our.
Yeah, sure, we can fix it, but let's understand all what Tim has suggested first.
Well, you guys, if you guys want to talk about it, I'll.
If you're going to read my writing.
Yeah, I can read your writing.
Well, I think it's good because I looked for a definition of this all over the place and I did not find one and I did not find a regulatory definition of it anywhere. As a matter of fact, I found a couple places where they said there is no regulatory definition, particularly of fencing. In other words, there's no consensus on whether or not a solar array even needs a fence.
Right.
It depends on the, what it says is it depends on the local ordinance. So it is very difficult to do that. It brings up the question about whether or not we would require fences. I think ultimately fencing is actually a prerogative of the person who owns it and it's for security and other land purposes. In other words, if he wants to put sheep in there, he might want a fence so the sheep don't go everywhere. If he wants to keep deer out, he might want a fence and there's a whole lot of stuff about electrified fences. Is there any danger, David, is there, like, if somebody has a five megawatt array, is there danger of?
No, you know, my code wouldn't allow you to have.
So kids that went in there couldn't be hurt?
I mean, you know, depends on how much.
How determined they are.
Yeah, how determined they are.
The argument there is that anything that's less than 12 feet off the ground has to have a certain amount of insulation over the exposed, you know, wire so that there's no risk. If it's greater than 12 feet, then it can be dangerous, but the presumption is that kids and animals and even accidents, you know, don't happen at that height.
Maybe a very, you know, you're not going to have any of the wiring to the panels to any other, the equipment is all going to be insulated.
Right, and likely in conduit.
Right, and then, you know, if you have a shed that has all your inverters, if they're not attached to the panels, then, you know, I don't see where, you know, the only exposed wiring I would see would be the overheads coming out of the system to the grid. That's really the only place I would see.
So they make the argument at any rate that a solar array is not like a swimming pool. It's not an attractive hazard. It's.
Or a substation.
So can we go back, can we go back to the definition that you read, Tim? I like it.
Vicki has a tight topic.
And I just want to, because since it talks about fencing, are we talking about the actual footprint? If you took a string and you tied the string around the arrays, is that the footprint of it? Is the fencing, you know, what exactly?
Well, I would think if there is fencing, that would be the, that would kind of define the footprint.
Yeah, and there should be some sort of buffer border around it as well.
And that.
Well, we require a 50-foot in this draft.
There is a, I mean, there is an incentive to keep the fencing lower and farther away from the panels because it does detract from the sunlight or it can't in certain times of day. Similarly, there's the same incentive to keep the fence, the outer border, away from trees for the same reason. So I know, and it would seem to me the incentive is always to keep it as small as possible. So, you know, because we've written the ordinance that, you know, there are limits on size that again makes it, makes the incentive to keep the fencing as small as possible. But the minimum limit would presumably be something that is dictated by the engineer.
So I have a question about the fencing issue. I'm not sure about this, but I seem to recall, I'm sure we discussed it last year, and I seem to recall maybe that we put that in the conditional use permit. We have wording about fencing in there. And I'm not sure that's something we need to address in this section.
So I just want to be clear on what it is we're measuring from, for this, in this definition.
You mean if it's not a fence?
So, right, so you've got a bunch of solar panels, maybe one or several racks of them. Are we talking about the area of the panels? I don't think so. In the definition that Tim just had, we're talking about the actual coverage of each of the.
Talking about the actual area.
The actual space that's occupied by the system.
Okay, I mean, that's fine with me, David, is that, I mean, you're going to get a print from the people that says it's 26 feet long and it's seven feet wide and you're going to do the arithmetic and you're going to say that's.
Oh, for, I like your optimism.
Okay. But yes, I would require. You would require, if, yes, okay.
Because I would need to, you know, to be able to make that.
Right, is it clear how that's going to work where you have a system that's not stationary, for example, one that uses trackers?
So we need to come around to the trackers. I was going to back into trackers in a minute. So they come, they say we've got three racks and they're going to be about this long, about this wide, and then, David, you can do that. If it's got a shed or a hut or whatever that has inverters or batteries or whatever else, you, that's, you can add that in.
Right.
And so we're talking about the stuff that's on the ground that collects solar energy. I mean, I think of a lot of places, big arrays, the one that I've walked around is at Crossroads, they do not have a fence there. And they have people that are especially attuned to attractive nuisances, so they.
As I recall, theirs is fairly a tall structure that it doesn't tier up.
I mean, they're pretty big panels, yes, but I mean.
So I don't know, you know. Because you're saying attractive nuisance that, you know, kids like to climb.
Yes, right, and yet they've not put a fence around it, so it's clearly not code motivated and clearly their insurance agents are not freaking out. Well, I don't know, I'm guessing for you, David, because you may know more about it. But their insurance is not freaking out about, oh my God, you've got kids next to these, so. So it doesn't seem that it's essential to have a fence.
No, I think it's up to the person that owns, you know, that owns, yeah.
In the conditional use permit requirements from last year, it stated as perimeter and/or security fencing may be required.
Right.
So that comes down to then how do we define the space of one of these things if there's no fence?
Again, how about if, I mean, I think once we get up to the medium size, then it may be, we're talking about something that's, I think we were talking about something that had 10,000 square feet of panels or an acre.
No, I think we dispensed with the panels. This was the reason why we didn't pass the thing, like, send the thing to town. We're doing it by acreage, not by panels.
Well, yeah, but I think that, I think that we can, we're getting into, we're stepping all over ourselves here trying to come up with definitions and I think I still think there could be a usefulness for square footage in the small and medium size and then after that.
You mean beyond Vicki's?
Well, I think that there, we could still use just the square footage of the panel. And because we're talking about.
That was the whole point, I mean, the defense, the whole point of this year.
It would, I think it really comes down to saying, okay, you can, if you, if there's not a fence around a traditional ground mounted array, you can just say there has to be a buffer zone of X number of feet. And to me, it looks like it's like 10 feet when I look at these arrays that are fenced in, one in Maine or other ones. If you're looking at a tracker, then you could, you could say, okay, when the tracker's in a horizontal position, the, and you could put this in the definition, the tracker's in a horizontal position, 10 feet from the edge of the tracker or, you know.
Edge of the panel.
The edge of the panel would define the outside border, so you really only need to go that far. Wouldn't it be a question of making it a whole lot, and I think it allows us to stick with acreage which is, really seems to be the way that we've wanted to go the whole time because every time we go to drip edge, we end up having to lapse back into acreage to have people understand it.
So, Rich, when you're talking about square feet of panels, is that a concern that there's enough power to make it worthwhile?
Well, I think I'm kind of backing into it. I'm saying a small panel, a small system is something that's, you know, 2,000 square foot of panel is going to be more than adequate to supply a single family home and might even be able to do two or three homes. Something that's 10,000 square feet is easily going to do multiple homes, but I think we're okay with that, you know, as long as it's like three to five homes or something to that nature.
Can I suggest that 2,000 square feet of panels, if in fact we said just 2,000 square feet of lot coverage, it's racks that are this long and that wide and there's two or three or whatever, that'll sugar out, it won't be, it won't be the same amount. But I think it'll sugar out to substantially the same, and I think it's, it is much easier to talk about footprint than to say a solar panel, I mean, it is easier for the planning board to think about regulating footprint. We regulate footprint all the time. And so, yeah, if you have 2,000 or fewer square feet of lot coverage from these arrays, you're done, then it's small energy system, we know the rules, it's easy to figure out. And it's pretty easy for you as the applicant to figure this out as well. So, I mean, would that be, would that be acceptable to you?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, I wanted to try to come up with something that's very simple.
I don't think we need 10 feet, you know, to define the coverage. I think if you had a.
I think, if you had an, an array of ground-mounted panels, I think you could say one or two feet beyond where they are, you know, all the way around, and that would be the coverage.
Well, but that's not what, I mean, say you just started out with a empty piece of land.
Yeah.
They're not gonna go just one or two feet out, I mean, they're involving ten or twenty feet out from the panels, they're gonna be, you know, there's a space in between the panels that's almost as wide as the, the space that the panels take. Um, you know, in between the rows and stuff, so I, I thought that's what we were talking about, is that it's the amount of acreage that the whole.
Yeah, what I meant though, and I guess I wasn't explaining, I was thinking one or two feet beyond the outside edge of all the panels. You know, in other words, you've got, say, twenty panels and you've got space between them, but the outside edge of all those panels is what, is what the coverage is.
But you're not gonna put a fence there, if, if somebody wants to protect their investment or, or just to build it, they're gonna, they're gonna be disturbing ten or twenty feet out at least, and so why wouldn't that be included in the acreage of the project? And it seemed to me also if they were, um, you know, putting it, uh, on the edge of a, a forest, they might wanna be clearing trees further beyond the panels to get the angle, you know, the sun angle.
Eyes of those.
So it's going to be an area that you're disturbing.
Right, although, we started this discussion way back when saying, if you can build a structure this big, you can put a solar panel this big. Um, uh, I happen to know that the lot, the barn at the Lockline Lodge is forty by sixty feet, more or less. So that's about twenty-four hundred square feet. So just for scale, this two thousand, uh, two thousand square foot set of arrays would be a little smaller, would cover a little less space than the barn does. This is not a huge thing.
Well, it's fine.
Maybe we don't wanna get involved in where it's placed, you, obviously setbacks, you can't, you know, side setbacks, front setbacks, all that stuff. Um, you have to observe that, but if you could build a building there, I mean, I, I just assume not getting to borders and fencing. If somebody wants to put up a fence, God bless them, but I don't think that that should affect the solar amendment.
So Rich, are, are you talking about just with the small or with, with all of it?
Um, I, my intuition is that we're gonna say for all of it. Um, that, that, but certainly for the small, we should just look at the actual footprint of each of the racks plus any other components and whatever and, and be done with it, and that, that has to be less than the two thousand square feet. Um, and that, that's easy. The lion's share of people that wanna do it are gonna come in. Dave is gonna say, two thousand square feet, they're gonna say, great, I'm at eighteen seventy-two, presto, change-o. It goes, they, they put it up.
I mean, we don't even need a conditional use permit for that.
That's right.
Right.
If it's a accessory use or we gotta figure out whether we allow it as a primary.
So Rich, how are you?
Yeah, this, this, the small solar, uh, we, we weren't gonna have CUP, if that's just for medium and large and group net meter.
Right.
Right. So how are you calculating the square, the size?
Well, what I, the, the way I understood your, the definition you read is you, you got a rack that's bumpy, bumpy feet long and it's this, this deep, that's the lot coverage for that rack. If you have two racks or three racks, so you're not counting.
If you don't have a fence, but if you have a fence, then it's, then it's the fence.
My suggestion is, we ignore fences. If, you don't have to, I, it, it's clear, it's not required to have a fence. And so, uh, it's a separate issue. We allow solar panels up to a certain area, lot coverage, the two thousand in this case, and you can install it. If later on you wanna put a fence in, I don't know that there's a whole lot of fence ordinances in line.
Um, I'll just, reading from the definition of structure, it shall not include minor installations such as a fence. So I have always taken that as, and since there is no other mention of fences in the zoning ordinance, I take that as fences are unregulated.
So I, I'd like to separate.
So maybe we should take fences out of that definition.
In, we have a solar system in our place.
But fences do contribute for big, bigger systems.
Tracker panels and then there's also batteries and, uh, and automatic transfer panels. But those are mountain existence structures in our garage. Is it clear that that stuff doesn't, that my garage doesn't get sucked into the, the space that?
No, I would consider that existing personally, I, I can't guarantee that the next zoning administrator would, would just take that.
Yeah, I would agree with that, it's existing, so.
Do we need to say that somewhere?
Yeah, this, collecting this is included, but not.
No, no, we take, we take it out.
You mean like, say unless, we include all components in the system unless some of it is housed in an existing structure?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, well, that might be, that might be.
Including, did you hear that?
Well, I was just saying, why don't we just put it after access roads? His definition is not include access roads, road and fences.
Or equipment.
Or house in existing structures.
Houses in pre-existing structure.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, like I said, to me, that makes sense, but, yes, you know, another zoning administrator may.
I think that's a good.
Look at it and say, well, no, it's, it's part of it, so you're, you know, I just, I don't see how you can double dip on.
Yeah, you shouldn't be able to.
Right, and, and, so, you know, when I look at, you know, we talk about, uh, you know, the zoning districts, they, you know, conservation districts, a lot of them overlay. And whenever I do my calculations, I subtract the, the one with the bigger impact first. And then, um, you know, because again, in my mind, that's the.
Buffering, that means the.
How it should be done, you can't, shouldn't say, well, these are vague sorts, but they're shoreland on top of that, so. We're gonna take forty percent of that and then an eighty percent of that also. That to me is, yeah, seems to be, right.
That's right.
We gotta give them the land back.
David, we were just.
That's right.
All right, good, so eliminating the fences part, that's good.
Okay, and what about eliminating buffering, because we require fifty-foot buffer?
So, I think they should eliminate buffering.
Yeah. Because buffering is usually gonna be a substitute for fencing or something.
Yeah, okay, so, limiting to mounting equipment, panels and ancillary components of the system.
So now we should perhaps address the tracker situation. Where the stuff on the ground is actually only a, you know.
Right.
So we have to talk about the position of the, of the, of, of the, uh, the tracker in the horizontal position or the aggregate, the aggregate area of the trackers when in the horizontal position. How about that?
Yeah, so it's straight line down from the panel when it's in horizontal position, straight down.
That would have to be the assumption, but I didn't say it because I don't.
It will also, it will also include the, the space in between.
Right, right, I'm trying to think of how to do that.
Well, why would it include the space in between?
Because we're talking about acreage and it's involved acreage. I mean, if we, if we don't, if we don't.
Otherwise, you've got three separate, you, a three separate.
Where we're not talking about actual acreage use. I mean, I don't, I don't know why we, we keep revisiting that.
My.
I feel you're paying.
Well, we're counting, yeah, because we're counting the space between the panel, if there's panels on the ground, we're counting the space. Well, I think, I don't think we are.
Okay, let me, let me, maybe I'm not understanding what I thought I was understanding. We said, okay, so you got a rack that's this long and this wide, and you've got three of them. So that's a certain, eat, that's three times whatever the lot coverage of each of those individual racks.
Although there's spacing between the racks, discount that.
And there is. No, there, there, that, yes, discount that.
See, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that, that's back to drip edge.
Yeah, it's back to drip edge.
Yeah, we can't, we have to count that space. Because that's the total land involved.
Alright.
Okay, well, I'm glad, I'm glad I said that.
I think if you have two trackers, you can assume that the installer wants to put them as close together as possible because it minimizes his ditching.
No, that's actually not right. Well, if you have two trackers, they wanna install them in such a way as it's so that they don't shadow each other.
Neither.
So they, they actually put them farther, farther away if they can.
But that said, okay, so that they don't shadow each other, they still want them as close as possible together to minimize their ditching.
Right.
In other words, the first priority is that they don't shadow, okay, and that's an engineering priority. Second priority is the amount of ditching they have to do.
So, can I, can I, uh, jump in here and ask another question? Because this, we just go around in circles on this. I thought that what Tim read and we agreed on pretty much dealt with area. So, what, what is, what is the problem? We, we, we heard that and we said, oh, that's good. What, what is the problem?
I can answer that, John, I understood it to be the footprint of each of the racks totaled up. So three racks, three times the footprint of the racks. So I'm gonna ask somebody, Vicki maybe, to read what, what we thought we agreed on.
Okay, I'll read it.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, solar land coverage is defined exclusively for the purpose of calculating the footprint of the land area occupied by the components.
Of a solar array system.
Of a solar array system.
So, so it's the land area occupied.
Right, so it's not.
Occupied is a key, is the key word there. It's not, it's not just the, the components, it's the area of land occupied.
Well, I would say that occupied is like where my foot is, that's occupying and the space between my two feet is not occupied.
Uh, I, I think the space between your two feet is occupied.
So do we need to add to that?
Including.
This definition includes the space between.
The complex.
Panel array.
Between the components.
I just took you the devil's advocate here, I, I think that's kinda crazy. We, in our house, we have two trackers. They were placed because we didn't want them to shadow each other. There were rocks and boulders, there were trees, you can't put them right next to each other. What, what if, what if I put one on one side of my property and another on the other side of my property? Because that's where I'm getting the best solar, uh, energy inputs and I'm not kidding about digging a, a couple hundred extra feet of fence. Are you then going to make me include the thousand feet between the two trackers as, as part of my coverage? That's nuts.
Okay, I'll, I'll play, I'll play this, I'll play the angels' advocate.
Because, because, because you're incurring the same amount of visual, um, potential, visual, um, did, you know, discomfort, disgruntledness or whatever, you know, undesirability.
Can I, can I jump in here?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, David, to David's point, you're talking about the small-scale thing. And, and I would, I would agree with you there, with small scale, but, but not with the, not with medium or large.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, that kinda makes some sense, John.
Yeah. All right, so, so John, specifically if, um.
Why don't you come back to my thinking, I'm measuring square feet on the small ones.
Actually, uh, with the old.
Go all the way back to the way it was originally written.
About the land occupied, uh, you know, and, and then we can say that, uh, for large, medium, and, large and medium systems, it includes the land area between the components that is unoccupied. Now, do you wanna add that? I mean, I'll try and put it in there in this definition and we can.
Well, we may as well try and hash it out now.
Well, so that's interesting, so that, David, that your two, uh, trackers that are like this, we might measure them, I mean, it might make sense to measure them as their, their maximum area. And, yeah, you can have a thousand feet between and, and we're not gonna beat you up about it. Um, similarly.
If you're putting in a big system, then.
I would say that if there's a certain amount of distance between them, then you actually have to go for two different approvals.
What, can we simplify, can we simplify this by simply saying that for small scale? For small scale, we can go to a different measuring criteria because it's a different animal.
Yes.
But for, for medium and large, it's acreage-related. Um, and it's fine with me for the, for the small solar for flexibility to, to go back to the, the panel size, but not for the bigger ones.
Yeah, because I think from a practical standpoint, it's not, um, it's not economically feasible right now to build a, a huge array or a huge field of trackers. I mean, you, you're, you're not gonna be talking about acres and acres of trackers, you just don't see them, even in Vermont, um, where.
Thirty-five grand a week.
Yeah, they're just too, they're not affordable.
But they can tilt though, they just don't track, they just, they still tilt.
Yeah, because they're, they're fixed, they're not moving.
Right, but they move, I mean, the panels move, there's.
Right, but they're not on a, they're not on a pedestal either, just.
Right, right, right.
So Vicki, I'm, I, I accept your, your modification that for medium and large.
Solar systems, solar land coverage also includes the land in between the land occupied by the components of the system.
Yes, right, and so that then, say, you take a string and you, you wrap it around the outside.
With everything, yeah.
And everything, yeah, that's okay, go ahead.
So, so what do we think about, well, you still have to define something about, you have to say something about how big a tracker is, which has to be.
It's the land area, um.
With the tracker in the horizontal position.
Occupied by the components of the solar energy system, so.
But it would be different for a tracker.
I think we should just, I believe it at the, at the footprint, because this is getting crazy.
But the footprint, the foot, footprint of a tracker, I mean, how's, how big is it, it's not very big.
Three by three.
Three by three.
Yeah, yeah.
That's how the zoning board has defined it, in lieu of any guidance from the planning board.
Yep.
You mean the, the tracker pedestal you're talking about?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Is a two-foot concrete pedestal?
Yep.
Two-foot round. What the planning board has, or the zoning board has decided that they wanna, I mean, if you really want.
That's gonna greatly incentivize trackers.
Great, that, they're more efficient, that's great.
Well, they, they feel that, uh, you know, you still have some use of the property underneath.
Wish you get a thousand of them, I guess, if they're not two by two, so that's, that would be happy if you get five hundred of them.
At thirty-five grand a piece.
That's, okay, well.
No, that, that's.
Yeah, I mean, you know, then you've got a small, which you can put anywhere.
Okay, so we're assuming then that the most anybody's gonna afford for a residential array would be two trackers. At the outside, three, even though there is a house in Orford that's got like four, four, five.
Right, it's got four, go by it every, by the day.
They've been there a long time, it was, they're, they're probably.
Probably old-fashioned trackers that aren't very efficient.
They've been there for years.
But.
No, I'm worried about the five hundred trackers.
The point is how big a, um, how big a space that is and would we be happy with that in line?
How come you like the idea of defining the space of a tracker?
Or it's only probably.
The space that's covered if it's in its horizontal position. I mean, really, that's kinda what it is.
Right, which is interesting because we are now within several millimeters of Rich, Rich Maggie's definition of just using panel size.
Well, except we're still using space between for, for medium and large.
Right, oh, sure, medium and large.
Right.
Uh, because I, I think it's unlikely that people will make medium or large arrays of trackers.
But, but it's not, Rich, is, that was actually the original language?
Well, what are we gonna do today? I, I'm okay with using panel size for small and.
No, I'm okay for that, we had, we had that last year.
Yeah.
So, well, if you use different criteria for small, then you have blurred the distinction between small and medium. No, it doesn't exist anymore, because you have different criteria for it.
Yeah, but there are also, I mean, it's, then how are you gonna, how are you gonna measure it?
We were measuring it by, uh.
Less than two thousand square feet.
By less than two thousand square feet of space occupied by the system versus, versus, it was, wait a second. What was this small, small was up.
Less than two, up to two thousand.
That's right, up to two thousand, and then the medium was two. That's right, up to two thousand, and then the medium was two thousand to one acre.
Right.
Of space occupied by the system. So we, we, we can, we can separate those sizes because they are sizes, and we're using the same criteria. If we change criteria, then we're gonna have a problem in defining the borderline between whatever the lower one is and whatever the higher one is. In some situation, you'll see, it'll happen.
Nat has pulled me back.
You pulled me back. Oh.
Yeah.
Does that mean like?
I still watch in.
What did he say?
I, 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 I agree with you, Nat. I was, I was drifting over to the other side, but I, I think you make a good point.
But I wonder whether we should, for trackers, whether we should just use the two square foot base? And I still think we should use the size of the panel.
I think we should, cause that's analogous to what we're doing.
Same as the other.
In a sense, uh, we're, we're actually disadvantaging trackers because the horizontal position, it's only in for like, I don't know, one microsecond of the day.
High winds.
But it's.
Never in that position unless it's a windstorm.
Right, but, um, whereas the others are always tilted at like thirty degrees in this land, too. So thirty-three degrees.
Could we say for small systems that for any panels, it's the horizontal area, or do, is it only for tracking systems?
So, I mean, I kinda like using panel size. I mean, David says, show me the, the spec sheets, and you're gonna have twenty-six panels at five by three. You do that arithmetic, you, you know what. Yeah, I agree, it'd be easier to do it.
Then how do we, how do we apply then the results of the survey, which clearly is multi-acre?
Oh, oh, uh...
Well, he's just talking about the small size.
Well, no, we got, we have to be consistent between all of them, how we're measuring.
So, so to, let me answer your question then.
Yeah, sure.
I did listen to the, to the recording, thank you David for posting that thing. Uh, uh, I did listen to the recording and I think we specifically asked about large arrays. People gave us an earful of what they wanted, what they didn't want, screening, and all this kinda stuff. We didn't ask about small and medium. I think, I think two things, I think we're on our own as far as, um, using our judgment. What are people gonna accept? I think that there's no question, small arrays are gonna, are, are, to my mind, small arrays are totally within what people expect to see. If the medium arrays, people are gonna say, boy, that's a lot of regulation, that'll probably be fine too. And I don't think the survey is terribly applicable to either small or medium arrays, because we were specifically asking about the large.
I, I would disagree with you there.
Okay, go ahead, John.
As amazing as that might seem, as unlikely as that might seem, uh, we did, we, we, it was a multi-acre questionnaire. So I think, uh, sticking with one acre is appropriate, uh, for, for the medium. And it's what we came up with last week.
Yes, uh, so I'm okay with an acre for medium. Um, I thought we were still talking about small.
I, I, I think we, I mean, except for the measuring, I think we all agree about the small. And then we're finding ways to disagree. We are, we're all saying that, what is it, um, what is this, the two thousand square feet?
Two thousand or less for small. Yeah, I think.
We, we, we all agree with that, we're, the only thing we're discussing is how to, how to measure it.
It, it seems to me that if you're, um, talk about all the components of the system have to be under two thousand square feet. For medium, all the components of the system have to be.
Under an acre.
Under whatever threshold we choose, yeah.
Yeah.
Except that.
Yeah, I understand that you're talking about the, the areas in between.
Right, and we could probably put in something.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that says that for, for, for measurement of a residential array, the space in between.
I wouldn't say residential, um, only because your neighbors proposed systems twenty-one hundred.
What, small scale?
So, that would. If you're using a different criteria for measuring small and, and medium, for example, and you're worried about getting inconsistent results when you use those two systems, one way to solve that problem is just to include a sentence that says, in the case of a conflict between the definition of the small system and the medium system, the definition for small system shall control. But I, I agree with your point that it's analogous to these different, but, but there is a way to resolve that inconsistency.
Excuse, excuse me, I, this is, I, again, what, what is, I think we all have agreed about, you know, we have the definition that Tim came up with. And we agree the, about the sizes, as far as I can tell. What is the confusion between, why would the small scale measurement system apply to the medium if it's different?
Uh, I thought the objection that was being made was because you're using different criteria for measuring the small and the medium. Well, I guess one of them includes the space between system and the other, between the geometry and the other doesn't. So you might have a system that, that qualified as both under the definition.
Okay, I think we're okay in this particular case. So a small system can be up to two thousand square feet of panels. Um, and we say explicitly, we're not gonna count the, uh, the, the space between racks.
But then we say for a medium system, it's more than two thousand feet, and we are gonna count the space. So if you had a big lot and you put the four panels on the corner of a lot, you might have a system that meant both definitions. That's the objection I understood you to be making. And the way you resolve that inconsistency is you say explicitly, if a system meets the definition for both a small and a medium, we're gonna treat it as small. I mean, the way I phrased it is more legalistic, but.
Well, but that would, that would have the bad effect. So you have, uh, what did we say, it's two thousand, so we have.
Or you count it as a medium, I don't care either way.
Okay, all right, yes.
You could do either, but, but, uh, you know, if you're talking about, it's gonna get picked up as a medium because you have two panels that are on the opposite ends of a lot, and under the medium definition, you have to include the space between them. My gut instinct would be you treat that as a small.
Okay, so then there's one other way you could do it. And that would be to say that we would talk about, uh, systems as being their horizontal area plus the space between, unless there was a compelling reason to separate the trackers by a greater distance.
Yeah, but that then gets into a judgment call, which the zoning administrator should not be making. That wouldn't then send them to the zoning board to, to say, is that reason legit?
But there are compelling, there are, there are, there is that.
The fact that I like it is a compelling reason, okay, but he shouldn't be put in a position to have to discriminate.
Well, it just comes for review, that's all.
Well, but, but that's, that's a lot of work.
Yeah, we don't want.
But it's not gonna come up that often.
We don't want small systems coming to us.
It's not gonna come up that often?
Remember that system we, we approved just a couple weeks back, where somebody had something on steep slopes?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
It was just like one little spot where it was flat and they could put it. Well, imagine that they wanted to put two and there was another flat spot, you know, a hundred yards away.
I'm just saying, that doesn't come up that often. It doesn't. I mean, think about it, when you've seen these panels, how often do you see them separated by five hundred feet? You know, I mean, you don't. It's, it's, it's a rare thing and it's reasonable to send it to the board for review, uh, for a compelling, uh, reason?
Okay, I, I'd like to, uh, make a comment. I, I'd like to recite a short poem. Keep it simple, keep it trite, then it's bound to turn out right. I think we're overthinking stuff.
Can I?
But that's what the planning board's all.
Keep it as simplified as possible so that we don't have thirty-five subtopics relating to, to unlikely possibilities. Keep it simple, keep it consistent, so that it's easy to apply.
How about if you look at the, the component, the area of the components of a system, if it's under two thousand square feet, then it's a small?
Yes.
If it's over two thousand square feet, the components. It's a medium or a large, depending on how big it is, and you would then go to those definitions.
Well, you go to those definitions that, that Vicky who read, which includes, which includes the land in between.
Exactly, but that way, if it's under two thousand square feet of components, it's a small. And then David, that's clear of your issues, because it doesn't matter where you're putting them. There's less than two thousand square feet of component size.
And I, I think.
So you're, so you're gonna wipe out the land in between?
For small, for anything under two thousand.
Right, and I think we should measure on the small, we should measure the, the size of the panel, no matter what angle it is.
That doesn't matter to me how you.
We should measure the size of the panel, it makes it a lot easier.
That will solve the issue that, you know, it's just, you look at just the components, don't care about how spread they are. If the components themselves are under two thousand square feet, great, you're there. If they're over two thousand.
When, when you use the word components, it's very, it's, it's a very good word, because you're not, you know, you might have something with a base that has a, you know, that supports the, a tracker, um, that's actually larger than the tracker.
Right.
So basically, you basically measure, it's, we had that in there last year, we said, uh, you know, the surface area of the solar collectors, unless another part of the system has a greater footprint, in which case the greater area measurement will be used. Um, that way we, you know, we don't have to use that language, but if you have a component that takes up a bunch of square feet, that's what gets measured. You don't really have, it, it doesn't matter which component takes up the square footage.
Well, I mean, you still then have the problem that you're using different definitions of the space.
Why is that a problem?
Only to separate one from the other.
Well, that's what we're doing, we're, I mean, I'm open to either frankly, but.
Well, what you're doing is you're, you're using.
If you wanna do it this way, then, um, we're, we're saying there's a different, a different, uh, criteria for small. This is how you have a small.
I disagree with that, you're not using a different criteria, you're saying, you're looking at two thousand foot, square foot area of components. Is it above or below that, equal to and below or above? If you go above, then you have some additional criteria. If you're below, you don't. That's all it is.
But are we still measuring the horizontal area of the panels for smalls?
Right, whatever size the panel is.
That's, I don't care how that two thousand square feet is measured.
It doesn't matter what the angle is. You're asking a very specific question, Vicky, and I, I agree, this is a critical one. Do we measure, is it drip edge, or is it the spec sheet size of the panel? I think it's easier to do this size of the panel.
It's far easier, you know, when I get a plan, to, um, look at the plan and it'll, you know, I'll get a cut sheet for the, each of the panels. I'll count out, okay, there are twenty-eight panels and they're this size, and take my calculator out and.
Three by five feet, yeah.
Yeah, and we have a calculation. You know, if a certain, if some panels are at a certain angle and then some are at a different angle.
It's really confusing, yeah.
Okay, so. I guess my view, if Dave's happy with it, then why aren't we happy?
Yep.
Because he's the one who's gotta take the front end of it. So.
So we're gonna measure the small, in the small, we're gonna measure, the size will be the size of the panels.
So the size of the components.
The components, right.
Because if you put a shit to, you know, house all your, your inverters.
Right, right, but does, so, but for the small then, are you doing the horizontal area of the panels or no? When you're measuring that component in a small? What are you measuring?
Yeah, again, that's how the board wants to do it.
I think, I think I heard David suggest, and certainly Rich has suggested, that we use the panel size.
I like the panel size, okay, but that makes my life easy, and so that's why I like it.
So we're gonna abandon acreage?
Four, no.
This is just for small.
It's just for small, okay, so for, for, for whatever, all the components are at, are, are counting to the, the coverage. For, in addition, for smalls, you add in the horizontal area of the panel. And for mediums, you add in the land in between, the land, the land in between the land occupied by the components. So it's kind of an additive thing. So you've got components, and for the small, you should then add horizontal area in the panels. For medium and large, you have the components plus the land in between, the land occupied by the components. So it's kind of like a addition thing, but I think to be fair, for the small, if we're gonna use horizontal area of panels, we then take, subtract the mounting, like the footprint of the, the pedestal or the rack that it's on should go away. We shouldn't be adding that.
It makes perfect sense to me.
We're already talking about the, the panel being horizontal.
The panel's always gonna be bigger than the, than the base.
Okay.
No, no, the racks can be bigger than the panels.
Oh, I'm thinking of the base for a tracker.
Right, but I'm, I'm, this is a fixed system, that base could be larger, but I, I.
It'd be rare.
It would be rare.
Yeah.
And I mean, when you look at, um, you know, if you're gonna measure the, the footprint of a building, you're not doing the drip edge of the roof, you're doing the side of the wall. So the overhang on the roof, you know, you could have two-foot overhangs, and it's not gonna count against you.
So. What about the wings and the footings? So now getting to the, the area of the medium and large.
Right.
I.
It shouldn't be counted.
I really think we're talking about. Either the disturbed area, if you took a piece of raw forest, how much area would you be disturbing? And I would probably tend to include the roads and the transmission, and the area for the transmission lines.
Would you include the buffer? The fifty-foot buffer? And where do you start that buffer? The buffer starts at the, at the disturbed area?
Well, are you saying a, a setback, or are you saying a buffer? Yes, I would definitely say the buffer.
Yeah, I'm saying a buffer and setback are the same, right?
They don't have to be, it's in the middle of the lot, I mean, it's, it's not.
Why don't you just say?
It's gonna be located in the optimal solar sighting of the lot.
Right.
That may coincide with, um, the side lot lines.
Right, so we have.
Setbacks, but.
Setback is fifty feet.
What's that?
The setback is fifty feet, right?
The property line setback is thirty-five.
Medium and large.
But I think there should be, yes, some sort of a buffer around it, and I guess I would call it the disturbed area.
So, I'm gonna. I'm gonna say. That, that it's.
We weren't even talking.
We're putting a, a big imposition on people. I mean, if, if they have a, a half acre, and they decide, yeah, I'm gonna have a bunch of racks and it's gonna be, it's gonna cover, and, you know, you draw, uh, take a, a string, you wrap it around all the structures, and that sugars out to a half an acre. They could put that, they're gonna wanna put that at the most advanced place they can. I don't wanna get too involved in telling them, oh, oh no, you can't, you can't put it there, you're, you know, you, you've gotta leave all this extra buffer around. There's a lot of engineering decisions there that, that, that go into it. And what's my, what's my real worry here?
I mean, that would make sense.
We're not, we're not gonna understand all the constraints. If they can disturb that, that half acre.
Excuse me, I'm having trouble hearing Rich, because there's a whole bunch of talking in the background. So go, go ahead, Rich.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, so they're gonna disturb. Yeah, thanks. Uh, so, they're gonna disturb, half an acre, let's say half an acre, just for argument. That, I don't wanna, I don't want the planning board to have too much to add too many constraints to where that half acre can go. They're gonna, they're gonna have.
Rich, are you talking about a medium or a small?
Medium. I think, I think we're done with small.
Okay, so what, what don't you want to happen with a medium?
So, I don't wanna get, I don't wanna have to add too many too many conditions in the conditional use permit to say, it's gotta have this kind of buffer, it's gotta have this, it's gotta have that. I wanna minimize those. I don't wanna throw them out. I mean, clearly, we, we have a right to say what, what we think these should be. I wanna get, I wanna avoid um, too many constraints. That's my concern.
My, my question about that is, can't we wait to, to get into that, to when we get to the conditional use permit?
Possible, that's right, that, that's not part of the ordinance, is it?
Right. So I mean, I'm, I'm trying, I really love for us to make progress on this. It seems like we, we have a, at least a working understanding of small, medium, and large measuring. Am I right? Don't break my heart.
Yes.
Can I, can I rephrase that to, are we, I'm under the impression that we're sort of backing into that these areas we've backed into such that the five to seven acres that we were talking about is really set up for a one-megawatt system. And the medium system is really set up for.
A one acre or less.
One acre or less, but that was gonna be, when I was sitting next to you last week, or last, you know, last week, we came up with the, the number of watts. It was basically like three to five households worth, you know, it was, it was kind of a.
It was like a neighborhood array.
It's a neighborhood array, exactly.
Group net metering, yeah.
Yeah, but it, it's more of a neighboring rather than anybody who's on the, on Eversource is a group net metered customer, right? So it could be a Lime person or it could be somebody down in Portsmouth. But um, so again, um, I, I think that, I think that when we were asking people and what we were trying to tell, what we were trying to get across to people was, you know, what is it that you're gonna be seeing when you're looking at this and you're gonna be looking at the whole, the whole ball of wax, you're gonna be looking at the road in, you're gonna be looking at the lines in, you're gonna be looking at where did they clear and where are they presumably gonna be maintaining in the future, that whole, whole footprint. And, and so that would include, you know, whatever buffer, any areas for fencing, any areas that are required to be kept open because you need to keep it open to get the sun in.
Yeah, I would agree with you, Rich.
So David, are you gonna be able to tell that easily? I mean, like disturbed area, that's a little nebulous, right? I mean, when somebody comes to you, are you gonna be able to, can you foresee being able to figure out pretty easily what that area is?
Cause you're gonna define it well for me.
We're gonna ask, we're gonna have them show, show that.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna go to the planning board.
Okay.
So you guys are the ones that are going to be, you know, I'm gonna look at this and say, yeah, not my trip call and I'm gonna kick it to you. And.
Yeah, that has to be, I mean, what Rich Maggie is, is doing is discussing the definition, a definition of what, what that is. And I mean, I think you're making good points.
Right. See, I think in this definition that we read, where it says the purpose of calculating the footprint of the land area occupied by the components, I know, Vicky, you were saying that, you're saying that where they aren't is not occupied, but I think the meaning of this when they wrote this was, when they say land area occupied, I think that means the whole thing.
That means the footprint to me and if I, if I think different than you do, then it's not clear to Joe Clear, Joe Percy.
Yeah, then, then make it explicit.
As a zoning administrator and I read that, I'm gonna agree with Vicky, that it's the area occupied.
Yeah.
You know, I go out here, the parking lot occupies a certain amount of area. Even though there's grass that's maintained, the parking lot occupies just that area.
Right.
Do you have, do you have the parking lot is.
Do I what?
Do you have a lot easier to define than a solar array in the middle of a grass field?
But I also have a.
No, it's not. You have a solar array that has an area.
So do we subtract the lines on the parking lot? You know, I mean, they're not actually part of the parking lot, they're just the delimiters.
No, no, they are.
They're.
Yeah, they're.
Well, I'm just saying.
You go out there and watch people and you'll know that they park right on those lines.
Um, so when we were doing the chatter in the background, it seems that although it was really nice having a simple solar land coverage definition, now that we've divided it, it seems like for each small, medium, and large, we should say how you measure it when we talk about small, medium, and large. And I think as, as helpful as the definition has been, it helped us work into like a solution. So what I'd like to do is put how you measure it under the small, the medium, and the large. And, and then we take away the definition of solar land coverage, which we just added because we don't need it. We talked about the measurement, so. And we'll all look at this reshuffling and see if it works for us. And if we need to go back to solar land coverage, um, Tim has his notes and we can go back to that.
So, Vicky, would, would that mean, I mean, essentially what you're doing is saying we'll, under each, the small, the medium, and the large will have the definition in each section.
Yes, how do you measure it in each sec?
The small will be what we discuss.
Yep.
And the medium and the large will be, it'll be in each section, but they're being measured the same way.
Yeah, they're, they're similar.
Yes, they'll be measured in the same way.
Yeah, that sounds like a foolproof way of doing it.
It, it, it just, and it, yeah, cause the definition was getting too cumbersome for the solar land, you know, cause we were making all these exceptions, so I would, I would like to do it that way. Okay, good, that's what we were whispering about.
So you're saying.
So, so, well, you said, you'll, you'll put that together and send that to all of us?
Yes, I'm sending it to David who can then forward it to everybody else.
Great.
So did you just say that we're using the same definition of measurement for all three?
No.
Okay.
No.
We're, we're, we're coming up with a, with a different.
The same.
Definition of each.
Small would be definitely different and then medium and large would be very similar.
We'll have some.
For the same.
From the point of view of the person building it or seeking approval, if it doesn't fit into small, he's going to need a conditional use permit.
Right.
Right.
Right. All right, well, you know, I, I'm, I'm gonna just jump in here and say terrific. We've gotten this far with this.
Yeah.
Do we want, do we wanna just put this aside for now and before we blow up the work we did? Why don't we just put, put this aside, Vicky will send us um, her wording and then we can revisit it.
It's everybody's wording. But um, yeah, the only thing is, so can I, I just think the conditional use stuff, we've got submission stuff and we've got standards and I would like to group all the submission stuff into one submissions and then requirements, you know, submission requirements and then there's the standards. So can I, you know, you've got fourteen, five-oh, A through A or L and just reorganize them into submission?
Yes.
So I'm gonna do that and I'm also adding a large solar energy system because we had small and medium and then it went right to group net meter, so we need a large, so I'm gonna put that in, say it needs, can be principal or accessory and requires a conditional use, just like the others. Okay, I'm just gonna do that reorganization and not change um, anything here. Except that I thought, well, that if we're gonna say what the noise is, that we should be able to say noise exceeding uh, something at the property line to require sound mitigation, so um, that's all.
Okay.
I think we need to be able to do something about that, you know, as a requirement.
Right, just so you know, the numbering, the lettering didn't.
Do we need to discuss the definition like group net metering?
I added them in, yeah.
You have, um, I, oh, 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 yes. Yeah, I, I actually reworded that, I'm sorry. The group net metering I just thought could be a little bit clearer. It's a solar energy system that directly supplies energy or energy credits to lot or lots other than the one on which the system is located.
Can a group net metered system actually supply energy directly to the lot? I don't think that's true. I think it has to go through the net. I think it has to go through the grid.
So it's an energy credit?
Yeah, it's only energy credits that, because that's the net metering part.
Supplies energy credits.
Well, a system that is doing group net metering can also suck energy off of, off of the solar panels before it even gets out there.
That's what I thought too.
That's true, that's true, to the host.
So, so you don't have to say anything about the host.
Host or maybe the whole constellation of group net metered units, like if you had a condominium complex or something like that.
Well, then is it a group net meter? In other words, if there is nothing going to the grid and then, and then being credited to somebody, is it group net metered?
I think if you have a system, say for example, on a condominium complex and the electricity is first used for the, directly by the condominium units themselves, but if there is excess, it flows into the grid and those credits are shared among the condominiums, that's a group net metered. But I'm the furthest thing from an expert on this stuff, so.
The question I had about that is, I thought when, originally everything was set up in Lime and there was the solarized Lime program, that those people were all included as group net metering systems. That they were, you know, all those systems that originally signed up. And I'm concerned with this definition that, you know, you have people who are putting in a home solar system that's a small system, but now you're saying it's group net metered. And so I think we need to be very clear on what exactly group net metering is so that you're not saying that.
Just because you're giving energy back to the grid, that doesn't make you group net metered, that's.
No, you're just net.
You're not group, you're not a grid. So in other words, if you're only one place, you're not a group, so you're not, you can't be group net metered.
So I, I thought originally that the people, there was, they wanted to get a certain number of people signed up because the, though that group would get a better rate because they are part of um.
I don't think I got that.
I don't know, I, that.
No, well, that, that is true. You do get a better rate if your, if your system is below like a hundred kilowatts.
I thought because of getting a certain number of people in Lime to put in these systems gave them all a better rate because they were considering all the systems as a whole, not just individual systems. Now, once that was over and done with, that there was a timeframe.
Yeah, I don't.
So it was like a sale.
See, the way, the way North Solar does it, the way, the way North Solar does it, cause I was just reading their thing. They have an array and they sell all that electricity, or they put all the electricity back to the grid and they sign up customers, so you sign up for that, it doesn't cost anything to sign up. And then you pay, as a customer, you pay the host a certain amount a month. And you save, they say that you save about five to ten percent on your electric bill. So in other words, you're paying the host for the electricity, he's, he's getting credits that he sent back to the grid and then you're paying him for the, like, for the credits.
Yeah, but that's Vermont and so it's completely different.
But that's the way it works, you know, they, how they do the group net metering.
I don't think you pay the host, I think you pay.
Or your supplier.
No, you pay the host, that's what the, that's the way it works.
I think I wouldn't worry about.
Somewhere, there was a depth, there was, I forget where it was, maybe it was the Energy Committee, but there's a couple ways these things can be structured. It's not just one.
Well, I, the other thing is, I, I looked at Northampton, I don't, if this is, I don't know if this is useful, but let, let me just read it. Group net metering, also community net metering. So they say, a customer generator may elect to become a group host for the purpose of reducing or otherwise controlling the energy costs of a group of customers who are not customer generators. The group of customers shall be default service customers of the same electric distribution utility as the host. The host shall provide a list of the group members to the Public Utilities Commission, PUC. And electric distribution utility and shall certify that all members of the group have executed an agreement with the host regarding the utilization of kilowatt hours produced by the eligible facility and that the total historic annual load of the group members together with the host exceeds the projected annual output of the host facility. The PUC shall verify that these group requirements have been met, shall review the executed agreements for compliance with the section and shall register the group hosts, host. The PUC shall establish the process for registering hosts, including periodic re-registration and the process by which changes in membership are allowed and administered. Net metering tariffs under the section shall, under this section shall not be made available to the customer generator group host until such host is registered by the PUC.
That's like a thirty-five, that's a thirty-five page definition, I mean, that's, that's like War and Peace.
Yeah, that's not pertinent, but I mean.
I think that, I think that is saying, it's saying two things. Number one, there may be a lot of different ways the group net metering can be set up.
Right.
But the state has defined what it is, okay? And we can go by that. And what the state is defining what it is, is that the, is that the energy has to go back into the grid and then you pay your supplier, your bill.
Right.
And then you get reimbursed by your host the amount that you're due, which offsets what you had to pay your supplier. And that is exactly the way that, that um, Rob Bolger?
Mark.
Mark Bolger's thing pretty much laid it out, which I think is by the state's definition. I don't think, there may be other ways of doing it, but, but if we're gonna actually use the term, I think we have to use an accepted definition, the state's definition.
I wanna, I wanna ask, I was not here last week. Why are we calling out group net metering separately?
The reason for that was because um, um, the question, should we limit construction multi-acre arrays to those projects serving primarily Lime residents and businesses? And we took that as, you know, that's as close as we could get to, to making that a presence in the, in the amendment.
So, um, I, I think that, I see a couple of things. First off, this group net metering is the only place where we are wandering into the business arrangements that support, that support this particular activity. You can have a small array, medium or large and it's quite reasonable that the planning board might say, we really care how big these are and what they look like and whether you can see them and all those things. But whether you eat the energy for breakfast or you give it away free to all your friends, I don't think that, I don't think that's where the planning board wants to get involved, I.
Then why did we ask that question? On the, on the server?
I, I had not been in favor of that question, but.
Ooh.
So.
What a time to say that.
Well, I think I did, but you know, people really wanted to ask it. I think it's, I think it's a laudable goal that we generate the power and we give it to people, you make it available to people in town, but as a, you know, I mean, so that said, so, we've identified group net metering systems. We say it's gotta have a conditional use permit. What would we do different? What do we think we would do different? If somebody came in and they said, I got this medium array and um, I wanna, uh, I either wanna use it all or sell it back to Eversource or I wanna. I either wanna use it all or sell it back to Eversource, or I wanna give it out to my neighbors.
I think there's one way to answer that, and there may be multiple ways, but one way to answer it is the way that, you know, the state does require that you put together a list of your off-takers.
But what would the planning board do differently?
They would review that list and see how, you see how much of it is lime res? And would we, and I don't know about the legality of that or not, but...
Oh, so let me, let me, let me address the legality.
Sure, go ahead, John.
We asked these questions of Laura, we asked the tree question and we asked, um, the, um, you know, this...
Who gets it, yep?
Yeah, so the, and this is her wording, the tree one, or the, the five-year thing, and I was surprised by this. She said, "I think this first suggestion is legal." So she thinks the tree thing is legal. So, I mean, note her wording, but she said in terms of the second one where a certain amount of, a certain percentage had to be used for lime residence. She said, "I'm not sure the second one is feasible. I'm not a subject matter expert by any means, but my understanding is that any large array will be connected to the grid. I don't think there's any way to direct the energy only to lime residence and businesses."
But the credits.
Yeah, and I, I disagree, but I'm not a lawyer. Uh, but yeah, credits.
The credits can be directed. And that's what, and that would be the, that would be, that would be the point.
Yeah, people sign up for the, the host, exactly.
And you could review the list and you could say, we approve this list or we don't. You need more lime residents.
Yeah, because...
I mean, they, they essentially do the same thing for the low-income subsidy. Because they, they, in matter of fact, they do more invasive, I would imagine they're asking for, you know, tax forms and all kinds of things.
But see, on question number five in the questionnaire, should we limit construction of multi-acre, multi-acre solar arrays to those projects serving primarily lime residence, residence of businesses? Sixty-three point three percent, that was the highest percentage of anything in the questionnaire, I think. Sixty-three point three percent of the people said yes, I mean, that was a huge...
Right.
So we have to kind of take that into consideration.
Going back to Rich's comment, um, you could ask the same question about a medium or a large system. How many people do you have signed up in line? I, I'm in agreement with him that the, the group net metering doesn't need to be there. Because it's how, you know, the, how the business is put together. What you're caring about is if you have a medium or a large, it needs to primarily serve residents of lawn. And you do that by saying, oh, how many people do you have signed up for? And which is the same question...
Well, the, the mechanism of signing them up is intertwined with the concept of group net metering.
It is, but you don't need to...
It just makes it a little easier to understand.
Right, but you know, in, in the ordinance, there's no reason to have it in there. Because...
You could, except that then somebody's gonna say, well, then how can you tell? The grid is the grid, the electrons can go anywhere. And you're gonna, then you have to explain, well, with group net metering, it's actually the credits that are... So, so I, the issue was just to put that both in there.
About the credits in the, the ordinance?
Well, I think it's easier to just use the term group net metering and let them look it up. You know, don't, you don't have to give them a priori on the whole thing.
If you're going, a solar developer, you know, you're going to be aware of that.
And that's what's gonna happen with the large ones.
Right. Well, I don't think it's fair to say that residents are not going to be interested in the, in these ordinances. Some residents are gonna wanna read them and, you know...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I think we should have...
Line now.
That's right, we're not just writing them for a solar developer, we're writing them for residents of lawn.
Yeah.
That's why I think group net metering is a reason to use the term. I don't...
I, I tend to think, I agree with you, I think it's good, I think that the way that we're going to be reviewing the conditional use permit is going to be using that process of, i- if in fact we decide that we're gonna require systems to be, have a certain percentage of lime customers, then that's how this is gonna tie in.
So, John, should we go back to legal and ask it in a different way about the credits versus the electrons?
Well, here's the word, basically she, what she's, what I'm taking that she's saying is, I'm not a subject matter expert. The, the question that was asked was, uh, here, let me just find it.
John, did you distribute these legal comments and I missed it?
I have not, um, I wanted to give John the opportunity to clarify and re-ask if, so I just at the back. And I don't wanna, didn't wanna throw it all out.
We haven't seen it yet.
You have not seen them yet. Just, I, it's sometimes easier to get more feedback.
Yeah, that's okay, I, I just...
I'm sorry, listen, when it printed out, it's, it's hard to read, but essentially what the question was is, um, in order to qualify for a, a large solar development, at least X amount has to be, either directly or, or directly supplied or credited, um, to a lime, lime residence or businesses. So I, the word, the crediting word was in there, but she ignored it and basically said, everything goes to the grid.
So, I mean, I guess we're gonna ask...
Should we ask it again?
Well, she's right.
Underlining and circling the word crediting, so...
Well, well, we can, we can act, you know, we can ask her for verification, um, about, about the, the word credit and because that's different than everything just going back into the grid. If the board want, if, if the board wants that, yeah, we, we can.
So I'm, I'm gonna ask my question in a little bit different way. I said, what, what is the board gonna do differently? And you said, well, we could ask for a list of people. And what if they're, you know, A, what do we do if they're one short? They, you know, we want fifty percent and they're forty-eight percent.
The zoning board.
Um, you know, oh, that's, that's, that's helpful. And then, but then the other is, okay, they, they signed up fifty-three percent of their customers of the, in the group net metering system are gonna be lime residents. And then people move on and they can't replace them and they're still selling it. Are we gonna take away their birthday? Are we gonna say, oh, oh, it's all right, you're, now you're...
That's something, that's something we'd have to define. We'd have, we'd either have to say that, um, you know, once you get that initial thing, you're okay. Or we would say you have to maintain it, but that's a question of the definition.
I, I...
I think, I mean, I actually, uh, Rich, I, I share somewhat the, the uneasiness with it. What, um, what's guiding me here is the questions we asked. As, as Tim pointed out, this was the most positive response. And, you know, we're gonna have to explain our reasoning. And if, if we say, well, you know, this was too difficult or we just decided we didn't wanna do it, I don't think that's okay.
And there, there are other ordinances that do speak to this and they do request or require a list of the subscribers when, when you're going for a net metering project. I mean, I, I would have to go back and look, but I, I was looking at some today.
Well, the state requires it.
If, if, Rich, Maggie, if you, if you could find that, that would be a great help.
Yeah, so, so I think in terms of asking Laura the question, I don't know that she knows the ins and outs of this. I think we need to...
She says she doesn't.
Yeah, so, so she's not, probably not aware of this, but it certainly seems to me that if we got more information, we could ask a more, more refined question.
So why don't we wait until, uh, Rich, Maggie, until you get something more specific for us to be able to, to give her?
Okay. If you find something, if you can send it to me, I'll, I'll do that. Um, just so you know, I'm out next Friday and tomorrow. And then the week of Thanksgiving, I'm gone, so I need to be, you know, I've got four days next week and then it'll be a while before I'm back.
Richard, you think you saw it in some other towns at ordinance?
Did you see it in the town?
I think I saw it, um, in another state, yeah.
Oh, another state, because I was, I looked at twenty-one towns in New Hampshire, I didn't find anything in those towns, but if it, yeah, maybe I have a...
Because I, I found some stuff from Massachusetts, I found a, an ordinance from, recommended by the state of Maine. And I think it was in one of those two.
And were they restricted to the state?
They, they were just...
Residents or the business of the state?
I, I think they were, there was something about, you know, the subscribers in the application. In the, I think it was a conditional use, um, application process.
I mean, the state of New Hampshire may do it, but just to determine low income, probably. That's probably, because that's the only thing that gets a subsidy. I don't think they have any criteria for...
So I'd like, I'd like to jump in again to keep the, keep the ball moving. So the, the, so Rich will get us some information on that.
Yep.
Second thing, I don't think we, we should start doing it now, but, you know, keep in mind that we had decided, that we were gonna split this in two parts, so at a certain point, we're gonna have to surgically do that if we, if we wanna keep doing that. And finally, you know, this, this might be a good time for me to turn to my colleague, Rich Brown, and ask him to make his traditional, uh, motion, if he's a gentleman.
And just, can I throw in one thing about this?
I was afraid, I was afraid to say that. You have to be quicker, Rich.
In terms of splitting, um, I would, I would advocate for splitting it into a small, medium approval or a small, medium, and large approval, okay?
Okay, you know what, let's, let's not start this discussion now, it's too late.
Because if we were adopted...
Mr. Chair, would you entertain some motion to a chair?
I am delighted to acknowledge my colleague, Rich Brown, and to take up this entertainment, so let's go on.
Okay, all right, I will send this to David tomorrow and, um...
I will send it out early next week, I don't have a rest and I'm not, his, uh, lettering's day tomorrow, we're closed.
I'm not gonna do it, I'm gonna send it to you tomorrow.